Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Hall Council Chambers for tonight's public hearing. It's March the 7th, 2017. And we'll call this meeting to order and ask Madam Clerk for the roll call, please.
Mayor Robertson in the chair. Counselor Louis. Counselor Stevenson. Counselor Deal. Counselor Jang not in the chamber. Counselor Reimer, leave of absence civic business. Counselor Meggs. Counselor Ball, sick leave. Counselor Carr. Counselor Affleck not in the chamber. Counselor DeGenola. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And first of all, I'll acknowledge we're on the unceded homelands of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations. And I will just go into some announcements before we get into the agenda tonight. We only have one item on the agenda. It's the rezoning for 371 West Second Avenue. We need to do our usual procedural piece with Committee of the Whole. And basically, in order to avoid the procedural uncertainties that which arose at previous public hearing some time ago due to the loss of quorum while council was in Committee of the Whole, the city clerk has advised that while council is required to consider a motion under Section 18.13 of the procedure bylaw to go into Committee of the Whole at a public hearing, council is not required to sit as Committee of the Whole. So, the city clerk's advice is that the motion go -- the motion is made, but Committee of the Whole is put to a vote and failed by council. So, we'll go through our usual procedure with that. We need a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. Mover. Counselor Deal will move. Seconder. Counselor Louis. All those in favor? And any opposed? And everyone's opposed. And that means we -- the motion fails. We are not in Committee of the Whole. We sit as council. Therefore, all motions require a seconder. That's the only difference at this stage in the game. So, with that procedural piece done, just a couple of announcements with respect to speakers. Right now, we have three speakers registered on this item. I'll just mention that speakers have up to five minutes to make their comments on the report. And we ask that you make your comments, keep them relevant to the merits of the report being considered. We also ask that speakers state whether they support or are opposed to the recommendations. And speakers may speak once, up to five minutes. If you have more comments, you can submit them in writing to the clerk, or you can email them to mayorandcouncil@vancouver.ca. And if you are speaking on behalf of three or more persons or organizations, you have up to eight minutes to speak. But you need to make sure that those people who you are representing and their organizations are present here and identify themselves and are not speaking. And you don't have to use all of your five minutes. There's a timer on the podium over there. And I'll give you a heads up as you approach the five-minute time limit. And you may have questions from council following your comments. I'll let you know that. And finally, if we don't conclude this item tonight, we would be reconvening Thursday, March the 9th, here in City Council Chamber. But I think it's reasonable to assume that we will hear all the speakers tonight and be able to conclude this item. So, with that, we will dive into the item on the agenda, rezoning for 371 West Second Avenue. Madam Clerk, can you read the application and summary of correspondence received, please?
This is an application by DYS Architecture to rezone 371 West Second Avenue from M2 Industrial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 12-story residential building with a six-story residential podium containing 133 strata-titled housing units. A height of 37.54 meters and a floor space ratio of 4.07 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing, council has received five pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 4:00 p.m. today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have Rachel Harrison here, our rezoning planner from the Vancouver Midtown Division, to speak to the application. She has a brief presentation. Welcome.
Sure. Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this application. You can have the first slide, please. It's being considered under the Southeast Falls Creek Official Development Plan. And the proposal is to construct a 12-story residential tower with a six-story podium or a base with 133 strata-titled units. The proposal includes two penthouse levels on the tower piece and one penthouse level on the podium. I'm still not seeing the slides. Thanks. So, the site is located on the northeast corner of Wiley Street and Second Avenue. It's just inside the Southeast Falls Creek Official Development Plan boundaries, which are shown here in gray, and approximately 250 meters away from the Olympic Village Skytrain Station. The site is currently vacant, and it's occupied by some temporary community garden plots. There's two heritage buildings next to the site. Across the lane, we have the four-story heritage building, residential building called the Exchange Building. And then, a mixed-use, four-story mixed-use building known as the Maynard's Building across from Wiley Street. And then, just east of the site, Pinnacle Living, 10-story residential tower connected to a six-story podium. So, here we go. According to the Southeast Falls Creek Official Development Plan, the site has a maximum height limit of 125 feet. And this is actually without the penthouse floors. And the application is coming in at 123 feet, and this is with the penthouse floors. During the rezoning process, staff worked with the applicant to explore various ways to green Second Avenue and make living conditions on this corridor more livable. The applicant is proposing to pull back the building off of Second Avenue, and the townhouse entrances have been elevated above the sidewalk and heavily landscaped with planters and trees, as you can see here. Engineering is anticipating the potential of a second row of trees, subject to looking at underground utility conflicts. So, in April last year, staff held an open house, and we also recently met with the strata councils from the Exchange Building and the Pinnacle Building. At the time of referral, Counselor Adrian Carr asked staff how many public responses at the open house were in favor or opposed to the application. And at our open house, our comment forums include two open-ended questions. One, what are your general thoughts about the proposal? And two, your specific comments about the proposal. In total, staff received 51 public comments from the public. And so, this slide summarizes the main comments, which were mostly from the Exchange Building and the Pinnacle Building. During referral, Counselor Adrian Carr also asked staff to highlight how changes were made to the application in response to some of these concerns. So, I'll go through those now. Staff heard concerns from the Exchange Building that the proposed development would shadow their rooftop garden. And in response, staff have a condition requiring that the penthouse floors be reduced so that no additional shadowing is cast on the rooftop above and beyond the base, the 10-story base tower. The applicant has also provided some shadow analysis, which I could show you later if you like, showing that this is achievable. And the analysis also indicates that in the spring and fall, shadows clear the roof by approximately 12:00 noon. And in the summer, shadows are virtually clear of the roof the entire day. Staff also heard from residents in the Exchange Building that they would like to see further setbacks in the lane and better privacy measures. Staff have a condition to increase the setback at the lane from 1.5 meters, which was in the original submission, to 4.7 meters. And in this setback area, we are expecting to see extensively landscaped area. Staff heard that traffic was another concern. The city's engineering department is aware of traffic congestion issues on Second Avenue, and this is also impacting a lot of the side streets, like First Avenue and Wiley. There are plans to improve traffic flow on Second Avenue, which will hopefully then alleviate traffic on the side streets by adding turning bays at key intersections, such as Crow Street, which is one block east of Wiley. Staff also recently received a traffic study from Bunt &amp; Associates, and the study anticipates that the new development will generate less than one additional vehicle trip per minute during rush hour. Staff also heard from the Pinnacle Building that they were concerned about the ability for their existing parking ramp to be shared with the subject sites, with the subject site, because it's so narrow. Engineering does have a prior-to condition asking for a corner cut at the bottom of the subject site's ramp. And during the development permit stage, staff will also explore other design options to prevent queuing issues on the ramp if those are needed. And finally, staff heard concerns about the impact of traffic and noise during construction. The applicant will need to comply with the city's noise control bylaw, which limits the days and the weeks for time and times for construction. And then, later in the development process, the applicant will also be required to provide a construction traffic management plan, which will show how the applicant proposes to minimize impacts in the neighborhood. So, in conclusion, this rezoning application again is coming in under the Southeast Falls Creek Official Development Plan for 133 strata units. Recommendations in the staff report include reducing the penthouse floors to limit additional shadowing onto the Exchange Building's rooftop garden, providing additional setbacks and landscaping in the lane, and creating a more livable townhouse units off of Second Avenue. Staff recommend approval of this application with the conditions in the report. Staff are available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for that presentation. And I don't have any councilors with questions, so we'll go right to the speakers list. And our first registered speaker is Andrea Baxendale. Followed by Jennifer Chen and Darren Stone. Those are the three registered speakers. Welcome.
Thank you. Andrea Baxendale from the Exchange Building. So, just to reiterate, this is a heritage building. Oh, thank you. Cool. That was built in 1913, so there is no setback to this heritage building. And that's why we're asking for additional setback from the proposed development. This would be for the privacy of our building, but also, it's going to compensate for the shadowing as well. So, we're asking that the setback not only be at street level, but that continue all the way up. And then, as the building gets higher, for that to actually be more pronounced. Our big, or my big issue is with the shadowing on this building. We're a four-story, as you saw, a four-story heritage building. The rooftop is completely gardens, and those are year-round gardens. So, they are fruit trees, herb gardens. They're winter and summer vegetable gardens. And we did see some of the shadowing report, but we didn't get anything for the winter months. And I understand that's not, the norm is not to send out those winter reports. But we have year-round gardens on that rooftop. We're a small, you know, four-story building, so it's imperative that we get sunlight in the winter when we have very dim light. So, if we have additional shadowing, which I would expect from, you know, 125-story building directly behind us, that is going to impact our rooftop gardens. So, I know Vancouver values its heritage. I also know as a green city that we value our gardens. And, you know, we represent both. So, the setback from Wiley is, we feel, from Wiley and from the lane, is to highlight what was the Southeast Falls Creek, you know, realm plan was to highlight these heritage buildings. There's three within this block radius. And, yeah, so we're just asking that that plan, you know, be respected. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for coming to speak. Our second speaker is Jennifer Chen.
I'm also a resident at the Exchange Building. So, we have a green roof, as Andrea had mentioned. And currently, my understanding is that the massing for the penthouse has been reduced by about 100 square meters. And the shadow plans look like the shadowing has been reduced. We haven't actually seen a elevation, a side elevation, to understand how the shadowing is reduced. But we do have an ask to see whether or not additional massing can be moved towards the south of the building. There are no other shadow implications to other buildings in the area, other than the Exchange and slightly our sister building directly to the east of us. So, the request is to see if there can be other massing to shift further south, so that even the 10-story base of the building can be further, the shadowing can be further reduced. Or the penthouse floors to be, again, massed more to the south to further reduce. Based on what we just heard, it sounds like the penthouse levels do not affect shadowing. So, we are asking whether the 10-story base can be massed further to the south. We don't believe that that would impact any other buildings, and it would greatly reduce shadowing on our roof. We have gardens, a common garden for all residents. Because there's very little green space in the building, and it's a heritage building, as Andrea had mentioned, we don't have a lot of balcony space. So, the fifth floor is a common garden for residents. And on the sixth floor, there are multiple private gardens that private residences have. And as Andrea mentioned, we garden all through the year, and the demand for space in the building is very, very high. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you very much. You have a question, actually, from Counselor Carr. Just have a question, if you could. Ms. Jen?
Thanks so much for coming. So, the moving of the building to the south would mean that it would butt up against Second Avenue. And there were concerns raised by the public around the lack of green space along Second Avenue. So, I was paying attention to the provision that's being asked for in a condition of approval, that there be planters, and there be some greening along there. How do you feel about that, like, in terms of, there is a trade-off, obviously. If it moves to the south, there's sort of a better result for you, but then, there's the streetscape is less green.
Sure. Or if the massing can be above the streetscape. So, I'm not sure if the building has the similar profile all the way up for all 10 floors. But if there is a pullback on some of the higher floors, or if there can be, you know, a different, I'm not sure what the, if it jugs all the way up. So, if there could be forward movement without impacting the streetscape, then that would be ideal.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And our final registered speaker is Darren Stone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. Yeah, I'm a resident of the Exchange Building, 388 West First, directly across the alley from the proposed development. And my perspective is, as an urban gardener, I've lived in the building for seven years, and I garden year-round, as do many others. We can't do anything about the temperature, but, you know, we can do things about sunlight. And that's something, I think, that's in the city's control, to give our vegetable gardens the sunlight that they need through the winter months. Right now, as an example, my wife and I are overwintering fava beans and heirloom garlic, and they do fantastic. And every year, you know, people in the city garden, and should be gardening year-round. I was surprised to learn, in this process, that shadow reports don't have to, I guess, coincide with a 12-month growing season, which is what Vancouver has. We've been told by the shadow reports that in October and March, half of our garden rooftop is in the shadow for half of the day. So, you know, we can only presume that for October, November, December, January, and February, it's darker. And my ask is that, you know, council sort of set expectations or, you know, for existing residents of the Exchange for just how dark it's going to be. Because, again, plants need light, and, you know, Vancouver claims to have a, you know, a green priority and an urban farming priority. And it's bizarre to me, and it seems disingenuous, that a shadow study would not look at the darkest half of the year. As Canadians, we know how valuable winter sunlight is. It's precious, and we should be studying this. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for being here to speak. Now, I will call three times, as is our practice on this, to see if there are any other speakers here for this item. Are there any more speakers here for this item? Please step right up to the podium. You could give us your name for the public record, please.
Thank you. My name is Noriko Nagami. Give you a spelling, because it's N-O-R-I-K-O. Last name Nagami, N-A-G-A-M-I, from Exchange. And my neighbors already expressed my main concerns. Primary concern is rooftop garden, that it was featured when I was looking to purchase that unit for the heritage building that I was looking for. So, it was very surprising to hear about all this shadowing and stuff that came in. And also, one other thing, especially already, we're already experiencing the traffic issues. And just, only just the entrance of that part will, setting back from the original plan, I don't think that would solve all the existing problem, because our traffic coming out from a parking, that is going to be congested, a result of that. So, it has to be set back all the way through, not just the entrance part of it, is, would probably help a little bit for us. Thank you very much.
Okay. You have questions from Counselor Louis?
Just trying to understand. Thank you for coming this evening. Just trying to understand, when you say setback, how much of a setback are you speaking of?
I think it's, I just don't have all this material with me. You already catered and considered for a little bit of the entrance coming from the Wiley, but not all the way through. And then, because of a heritage building, we cannot do anything. We couldn't do anything about that. So, new building, I'm sorry, I cannot give you the numbers right now with me.
So, you're an owner in the Exchange?
Exactly.
And you're concerned about your garden that's on your rooftop?
Yes. That's the reason that I, yeah, I'm considering purchasing that.
You're saying--
Along with the heritage.
But you're saying that the new building should be further setback, because your building isn't setback--
Absolutely.
--from the property line, and that you're worried about the shadow impacts--
Exactly.
--of the building itself?
Yes.
Okay. I'll ask staff about the shadowing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Are there any other speakers for this item? Last call. Okay.
I am Marlies Ernst, and I also have been living in the Exchange since 2010. I will be in one of the buildings that faces the new building, so I do really appreciate that consideration for setback, because that has a lot of impact for light. I am lucky to have a corner. One window will still provide light for me, but I know for neighbors next to me, they get light only from the south. And as a very low building, that they're going to be with electricity on basically almost all the time with the shadowing. But we knew there was going to be a building set up eventually. We were just really appreciating, looking at that height consideration again, as my neighbors have mentioned. But just also looking at the city plans as a whole, because we realize at some point, too, there's going to be a building across the street. Granted, West First is quite wide, which is great, but we know there's going to be another, of course, taller than our building on that side. And just given that we're a heritage building that's fixed, and, you know, it gets a lot of attention. It's beautiful. People look at the brick. They see that it's a unique building. However, we're going to be diminished between these and that Maynard's Tower. So, overall, I'm just sort of wanting to kind of put my two cents in for what we're creating in terms of Falls Creek South in Vancouver. What we're calling moderate density is quite high density, like, save super tall towers. We're really dense. There's a lot of wind tunneling, a lot of shadows on balconies that people use for storage, because they're not like sunny, wonderful places to sit out on, if I speak of the village, per se. So, I just think that when we're looking at what's going to be created, what we're doing now is building a, not even a seven or, you know, seven-story apartment building over a nine-story. We're looking at much taller, 123 feet. So, if I even look a block over, where we have the James City Homes, where people are having million-dollar city homes, there's million-dollar homes in our building as well, they don't have that south-facing. South-facing is particularly important because of the light. Rather, it'd have tall buildings on the north side, because it's not much of a water view anyway. But that way, the light on the garden would not be affected. However, those James, those city homes only have a lower, still taller than our building, which is fine, but much lower building and greater setback. So, I'm just looking at what it's going to look like, not just for me, not like, you know, if I'm there for how many years or the rest of my neighbors, but for like 20, 50, 100 years from now, what is this looking like? It's looking really, really dense, and we're shrinking our heritage buildings between these new towers. So, I just want that to be in consideration. Because I feel strongly about that. And I think that when we look at the original, like, Falls Creek with, like, the Granville Island, all that area along the seawall, that was beautifully done. That was beautifully done. They're still moderate-height condos, but they're beautifully set back around gardens. We're now doing tall towers and then plunking a garden in the center. Tall, you know, I understand there's a lot of green space, but in between people, their homes, they're not getting the light. They're not getting that. They're not being able to appreciate their home. And I think over time, we're going to start seeing it. That's just my two cents on that.
Thank you.
And I realize I'm going to be in a wind tunnel along that stretch as well. So, the taller the buildings are and the narrower they are, we're going to feel it. And I've got heritage windows, so I'm crossing my fingers. They hold up.
Okay. You have questions from Counselor Carr?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for coming, all of you for coming. But interesting, you mentioned the wind tunnel at the end. I'm a geographer, urban geographer by training, and we talked a lot about wind tunnels, and I hadn't even thought about that in terms of the higher buildings along the street. But my question is this. We received a letter, all of us, as mayor and council, that addressed this particular issue you're raising around the squeezing in of the heritage building and by taller buildings surrounding it, and the concern around the rooftop garden. And I'm going to ask staff this question, and actually, the applicant. But how would you respond to the idea that was suggested, that the buildings be flipped so that it just, the shorter side, the podium shorter side, is more adjacent to the Exchange, and the other taller side be moved in?
I would definitely appreciate, like, that would be definitely a worthwhile consideration if that's possible.
I have no idea for this.
I overall, I would like to have not such a tall building. I realize and accept that there will be a building taller than ours there. That is okay. But to have it so extensively tall is a little disappointing. I'm just disappointed in the overall density, and especially traffic. That's another issue. But I'm not sure I really, I don't think people are really going to appreciate that green space necessarily. We all love green space. But along West Second, where everything is storefronts already, all of a sudden, we're going to have this one building with a few, a little bit of green space. And I'm a resident there, so I'm not like, I'm not speaking of it just because I live in the Exchange. But I think having green space between the buildings makes it so much more pleasing all over. So, I would rather have that setback and actually not just planters, but like, you know, if you could have space for trees or people to have walk-in entrance, that would have been so lovely, rather than having it where there's going to be, you know, business on the first level--
Right.
--on second for that stretch. It just really has no point when the rest of it isn't going to change.
Yeah. I'm not sure of the distance on West Second, but they, staff did note that the increase, that one of the conditions is an increase in setback at the lane of 4.7 meters. So--
That is really, I, we appreciate setback there.
All right.
Yeah. Because we have, we're just like right up against the alley right now.
Right. Okay.
And there is people living on that bottom floor. So, there's, it's residential right to the base.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight. Last call. Are there any other speakers here for tonight's item? Seeing none, we will close the speakers list. And as we've had fewer no public comments since 5:00 p.m. received on this item, I'll suggest we close, receive a public comments, and move on to hearing, closing comments, and questions for staff. So, we'll give staff an opportunity to make closing comments.
We have no closing comments.
Okay. And the applicants? Did you want to make any closing comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Dane Jansen with DYS Architecture. It's been a long process to get to this point. There's been discussion around the setbacks off of Second Avenue. I want to recall that that is the end of Yukon Street as well. What prompted this is that the building next door, the Pinnacle, is live-work, and we were concerned about that relationship. What, what prompted this is that the building next door, the Pinnacle, is live-work. And we were concerned about that relationship of having people live right adjacent to the sidewalk, as well as what the view is at the end of Yukon. So we were taking a broader view that when you come down Yukon, as I'm sure many do from City Hall, is to have something that was more green rather than just the, the urban edge. So that was what, what prompted that. The placement of the building, the heights, as you heard, are all part, part of the longer-term study of the OCP. And just to reiterate that, that we've been working together with staff and grateful for our, our relationship and working through this. The overall height, including the penthouses, is actually below the, the original maximum height. Happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll go to questions for staff or the applicant team. Final round of questions. Counselor Louie?
Yes, just on the setback component, it was 1.5 and it moved to 4.7. Is that right? And that's for the podium component piece, where that's the entire wall. That's the entire setback, right?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Shailen Black with the Urban Design Division. So these conditions that we're recommending here are intended to carve back the corners of the tower element in order to open up views to the heritage building, in order to provide better sunlight and daylight to go to the heritage building that's to the north that would be affected by this development. It doesn't move the entire wall back to the, the 4.7, but the condition goes on to say that at least 2.8 meters should be provided as a setback from the lane edge to the, to any face of the building. For reference, as other buildings in the southeast Falls Creek area have setbacks as little as five feet from the lane edge to the start of a building. We thought in this instant, instance, because of the proximity to the Exchange, which is developed right on its property line and can't move, it's a heritage building, we needed to do a little bit more to improve that interface. So council, you'll see in our recommendations in the appendix B, we do, we do aim to improve that to a degree on balance with achieving the housing that's intended in the ODP for this area. The ODP sets out a certain amount of density, a maximum height. This application is working within those parameters. So we, our report here aims to strike a balance between the, the potential concerns by nearby residents and the intent of the ODP originally. I'll say briefly to the idea of moving the tower from the southwest corner to the middle of the block, it's, it's an, it would be an interesting departure from the overall pattern of the southeast Falls Creek area, which intentionally locates the towers on the corners of the block rather than in the middle or staggered throughout the pattern. It's, it's an interesting exercise, but I would really want to see that vetted by the residents of the Pinnacle, who would be affected by a 12-story building now located next to their common property line, as opposed to on the corner where they would rightly observe it was expected to be located in the ODP. Hope that answers the question.
Thank you for that. Just in regards to the shadowing impact and looking at the, the staff presentation on, on the shadows themselves, what effect would it have with a further setback? I don't think, at this height, which is not including the two penthouse levels, it doesn't appear as if it would have much effect at all if, unless the building height itself were to go down.
To make significant improvements to the shadow, you would be reducing the base building from the height that it's at now, reducing, in all likelihood, the density in a substantial way, and you'd be making substantial changes to the height. The, it's, you can see that there's that kind of 12-foot setback to Second Avenue, intended, as the architect noted, to improve on that interface. The setback is a little less as you get to the tower element, so bringing that much closer to Second would leave you with a very narrow margin. So it's true, you would have some improvement to the shadow by moving the building closer to Second. You would also reduce that landscaping opportunity on the Second Avenue side quite substantially. And I think from staff's perspective, we're not ready to give up on Second Avenue. We think that there's some hope for it through this increased buffer that this design proposes, for example.
So you're, you're thinking it's a balance between the two different sides?
Yes.
A little bit for both, but even with the movement, if it were to move closer to Second Avenue, with the height remaining the same, there, there wouldn't be, if I'm looking at your, your shadow impact correctly, it doesn't look as if it would substantially increase or decrease the amount of shadowing.
So hypothetically, if you were to move the main tower eight feet to the south, you would reduce the amount of shadow by about eight feet. And the difference between eight feet of shadow is fairly rapidly consumed as the months of the year change. So you would, you would gain a few weeks of less shadow at the cost to the interface on Second Avenue. All right, thank you.
And Counselor Carr, questions?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. My questions are along the similar, similar lines. I'm just looking at the two buildings and the models that we've got, and I don't notice on the Pinnacle any windows on the side that's adjoining the buildings. And I don't know if there's a rooftop garden on the Pinnacle?
I'll ask Rachel to bring up the aerial. That'd be great.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So other than the plan, and I realize this is at a late state, but I'm sorry, this idea just came forward from a, one of the pieces of correspondence that we received. But the actual flipping of those two buildings would, as you say, not be consistent with the general way we do the plans, where it's, it is corner buildings with towers. But notwithstanding that kind of tradition, we're talking about a real quality-of-life issue here for people who are living in, you know, in the building behind and their, and their rooftop garden. So is it possible, can this, can something like this be actually contemplated at this stage? And I guess we really, I really need to also ask the applicant to respond to that, too.
I think that would be prudent. I would also observe the obvious effect of moving the tower to the east, is that instead of shadowing the Exchange, you would shadow the open space of its neighbor, which also has a highly-developed and in fact commendable palette of open spaces on grade. So you would be exchanging one shadow impact for another.
Right. So can you just point out whether, I'm sorry, I'm just, just seeing this for the first time. Oops, I should look at it here. It's easier.
Is there a pointer to this? All right, let's see if it works. No. Let's go with the mouse. The mouse seems more likely here. There we go. So I'm just indicating this open green space here.
Right.
You can see the planters, the pathways, the lawn that exists here. Were you to shift the tower from here, where it is absolutely having an impact to the folks who live at the Exchange, to this site here, you would now be increasing the impact to the open space in the backyard of the Pinnacle, who are not here to speak-
Right.
-and to the backyard of the adjacent building to the Exchange, who are also not here to speak because those tower positions weren't proposed in this rezoning.
Right, right. 50% of the roof would be shaded in March, is that correct? At what, 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM? I'm sorry, I didn't, you could remind me.
Yes. So the current application, before the changes that staff were recommending, would have the shadow effect you see here that would kind of sweep across as, as the hours pass. And here, I, I'm hoping this is the basis of many of our shadow analysis. This is the March, probably March 21st shadow analysis. This is kind of our gold standard for evaluating shadow impacts to a building. It's neither the longest shadows of the year, the December shadows, nor the shortest. It's kind of, aims it down the middle. And so you see here, the effect, oop. We could go back to that. That's, thank you. So you can see the sort of golden rod-colored line. That's the application that is technically before you. It shadows the majority of the rooftop spaces. What the recommended conditions here would do is effectively take away the majority of the penthouse impact. In other words, the impact of those two incremental stories on the top of the building that's proposed. And staff are going after that penthouse in particular because it is the most conditional part of this application. Majority of this building, the, the base tower, base heights, the density, are within the ODP. They were the expected intensity of development. Penthouse levels in the ODP are more conditional. They're more prone to careful testing. In this instance, we thought the shadows created by those penthouses onto the Exchange were not acceptable, and so our condition aims to eliminate them through this next iteration.
And December?
December, you would see very long shadows that cover the vast majority of everybody's open spaces. That's the nature of December shadows. They go on forever.
And this is, and what are the requirements around, around private shadowing? I know that public space, we have some requirements. These are, these are shadows that would, that are impacting private space. And what obligation do we have as a council around protecting that?
So I can't speak to your precise obligations as a council, but in many areas in Vancouver, we prioritize shadowing, or the avoidance of shadowing, onto public parks first and foremost. Then we try to avoid shadowing onto areas that are very active, such as retail high streets in, in the downtown. Last on the list is impacts to private spaces, and, and that's not because we think they're not important, but because the number of people who use them and rely on them is smaller. I'm sure every resident values the space that's on their roof. Personally, I certainly would, but in terms of overall civic priorities, we put public parks first.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's all the questions from council. So someone want to make a next step possible here? Counselor Louie is on the queue.
I will move the staff recommendations with the conditions as set out by staff. Interesting situation, of course, wanting to help to preserve our heritage and make sure that it continues to be livable and, but at the same time, we have an existing southeast Soul Street plan that is, was developed. And in this case, oddly, I think I can say that, oddly, the developer hasn't decided to build to the maximum height that might be allowed on, on the site, which would have, I think, absolutely impacted the Exchange building even, even further. Instead, they've gone below the allowable height and come in with a submission that I think is a good submission. It certainly fits with the context of the surrounding area. It was expected that this site would be developed to this general height when the development plan or official southeast Falls Creek plan was developed. And it's come in under that framework. Of note, I would appreciate the fact that, under the family housing component, that it goes beyond the components that are necessary, the 25%, and comes in with additional three-bedroom components, which is, you know, a good component to, to add into this equation. I do, I think, have the, you know, share some concerns about the shadowings, but it doesn't appear that there's an evident solution to this, given the proximity to the number of other green spaces that are in the area as, as well. And so, given the fact that staff have committed to continue to try to shape the building and work the building into, you know, into final design, I think that the trade-off between Second Avenue and the lane side of the equation is an appropriate one. I think, you know, we should be looking at all of our neighbors around this building and see if we can't find that balance. And I think this building, as recommended by staff, does, does meet that, that test. So I will be supporting it.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Louie. Counselor Carr? We need a seconder for that. Counselor Stevenson will second. Counselor Carr to the motion.
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is a very difficult decision, and, and I absolutely empathize with the individuals who are, who have spoken to us tonight, and I appreciate so much your coming out about the impacts that this particular application will have in terms of a very cherished amenity, the rooftop gardens, the year-round rooftop gardens in, in the building of the Exchange. You know, I, I think that what we need in this city is a, a, a plan, a, a plan with teeth around protecting agricultural or gardening space that's producing food year-round in the city. And I think it's going to become only more imperative as climate change takes away the ability of food-growing areas, such as in California, where we get a great deal of our food currently, and it's, and it's on the decline. In the absence of that kind of plan, I, I'm one who really does go with the residential plans that have been developed with the input of people who live in a neighborhood and a community. And, and I'm a stickler if, if there are applications that come in that really egregiously exceed the height and density or other measures called for in that plan, which were determined by the, the public input. As Counselor Louie pointed out, that's not what's happening here. The height of the building is under the height of the, of the, a building that could be built under the, under the direction of the community-based plan. And there are reductions through conditions of approval in some of the height that was originally proposed, especially the, the penthouse units, to try and mitigate the shadowing on the building across the lane. That doesn't make, I mean, that's, that's good. The mitigation efforts are all in the right direction, but the ultimate result in terms of impact still, even though it's under the guidelines of the, the plan, the impact on the quality of life of, of people in the Exchange, I think is, is going to be negative. I think we need to recognize that as a council and realize that we have to address that moving forward. But in this particular case, I can't find the grounds that would, that would say to me, this application has not done due diligence in adhering to the plans that are in place within the community nor bent in terms of accommodating some changes, which they'll have to do through the conditions of approval put forward by our staff. So I will support this application, but as I say, it's a little bit with a heavy heart in terms of the impact that this will have.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Carr. And maybe I'll just build on that. I just, I don't have anyone else on the queue, but I'd share that concern about how we're impacting green space with shadow. I know staff have, do lots of analysis on this. In this case, it seems like it's an interesting predicament between the sighting of the highest component of this project, where it, there's more shade on the Exchange, and it spares some of the, the green space behind the James. And I'm, I'm curious, I probably should have asked this as a question, but maybe I just put it as a direction. And I think in the same boat as Counselor Carr on this, I think, I think the applicants have done the work and with staff to, to mitigate impacts within the plan. Just in future, the trade-offs between which green space takes, has more priority or precedent? Do we balance it between impacted spaces? And in this case, they're both on private land. They're not parks. I know we're, we certainly are very careful with parks and shadowing, but it would be helpful to see more analysis of what those trade-offs are in terms of citing a building like this, if it was farther east. Maybe it would be, it would be more equitable between those green spaces, but I, I'm not clear what analysis actually happens, but weighing off the concerns on, on shadowing with different green spaces like this. So hopefully, the, the rooftop gardens are, are able to endure having a, a building south-southeast, and that, that the impacts are minimal. Appreciate people coming forward and saying this because it does, we can get better at this every time, and that's the, the lessons that are learned, but, and we'll see how it, how it plays out in the end. But I think in the situation we're in now, it's, it meets the plan, and so we're in a position where we should be approving. And hopefully, it, it works out in, in real life, and the gardens on the rooftop of the Exchange are remain healthy and vigorous. So thanks to those who came to speak. I don't have anyone else on the queue, so we will go to the voting screen on the question. And has everyone voted who's here? We do have seven votes, all in favor of the motion. So the motion carries, and that means we've approved on that item. Again, thanks to those who came to speak, give input to council here tonight. And we have concluded the one item that was on our agenda for tonight. So we need a motion- And we have concluded the one item that was on our agenda for tonight, so we need a motion to adjourn this public hearing. Councillor Stevenson moved and seconded. Any debate? All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries. So we are adjourned from this public hearing. Have a good night, everyone.